All right, the time is now 5:35 and I'll go ahead and call our special trustee orientation to order. All right, and so the agenda for tonight is we're gonna do some introductions amongst all of us here. So I'll go ahead and introduce myself. So my name's Walina Operson, she/her/hers. I am the Chair of the Board of Trustees here, so welcome and we're glad to have you guys here. And we're gonna, I want everybody to introduce themselves, but first we'll start with all the trustees. And then I want the trustees to introduce themselves and let them know whether you're elementary, high school, and how many years you've been on the Board. And I'm on my second term, so I think that's, I think I've been here four, four years. And two years as Chair. So I'll go ahead and, we'll just start down here with Rob and then go through and everybody will introduce ourselves. And then we'll move on to the administrators and then you guys get to introduce yourselves.
All right, welcome guys. My name's Rob. I've been on the Board for a little over a year. I represent High School District C, which is the Big Sky District technically, even though it's not really that area, but that's what it covers technically. And I work as a pilot, so I'm not home a lot of the time. You'll probably not see me more often than you do, but I'm here when I can, so welcome.
My name's Cohen Mercer. I'm like four years or so. I'm an elementary school trustee. I am a public defender by profession.
I'm Jen Vogel. I've been a trustee for about three years. I represent District D, which is Seeley Swan High School. I'm also a special education teacher and I'm glad to see you all here today.
Hi guys, I'm Nancy Hobbins, Vice Chair of the School Board and Elementary Trustee. Been on for three years.
Hi, I'm Grace Decker and I am an elementary trustee and I've been on the Board for almost nine years.
Hi everybody, my name's Meg Witcher, she/her/hers. I have been on the Board for a little over a year and I'm an elementary trustee.
All right, and now we could start with administrators and we'll go ahead and start with you.
Thank you. Welcome everybody. And my name is Micah Hill. I'm the Superintendent of Schools. And I've been here for four months, so.
Hi everyone, welcome. My name is Pat McHugh. I'm the Executive Director of Business and Operations and the District Clerk for the School Board. And excited to have you guys participate. I've been with the district almost 20 years.
I'm Trevor Lebaskey. I'm the Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations.
We're sharing a microphone. I'm Amy Shattuck. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for High School. I've been with MCPS for 27 years.
Hello, my name is Vinnie Jamona. I'm our pre-K8 Assistant Superintendent and I've been with MCPS for about 15 years.
And before we move to the students, I forgot to get our other Vice Chair, Arlene on.
Arlene, Arlene Walker-Andrews and I represent High School for both Bonner and Target Range. I'm retired. I used to be a professor and an administrator at the university. And I've been on, I think, two years. Thanks.
All right, so now we'll ask the students to introduce themselves, but let's go, since we were just online, let's stay online. And we'll go ahead and ask Reagan to do an introduction. So can you please introduce yourself, what school you represent and provide a little information about yourself?
Yeah, so I'm Reagan Jones and I'm at Seeley Swan High School. And I'm a junior and I'm originally from Indiana and Colorado, but I moved here about two, three years ago. And I love to read and snowmobile. And I am Secretary of Student Council, Vice President of Leo's. And this will be my third year managing boys' basketball.
Awesome, thank you. Now we'll go ahead and start at that end.
I'm Ryan Howell. I'm a senior at Sentinel High School. Some of my extracurriculars are, I'm the captain of the speech and debate team. I do academic world quest, econo quest, some others within there. And some of my hobbies include skiing, hiking, pretty much anything outside. And I'm excited to be on the Board this year.
Hello, my name is Devin Desha. I'm a senior at Hellgate High School. I am Senior Class President, President of Key Club, and Managing Editor for the Lance Newspaper. And I'm really excited to be here and represent Hellgate. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wilson Freer. I'm also a senior at Hellgate. I'm the Student Body Vice President. And I'm also in the newspaper with Devin. Yeah, I'm excited to be here too.
Hi, my name's Atsita Gladwell. I'm a senior at Big Sky High School. I'm co-senior class president and I'm involved in cross-country. I'm a captain on the team. I'm ambassador of the Health Science Academy and I really enjoy like spending times in the outdoors.
Hello, my name's Emily Fortune. I'm a senior at Big Sky. I'm involved in student government and it's been something I'm passionate about for the last four years of high school. When I'm not at school, I enjoy hanging out outside with my family and my dogs, because they are family.
All right, and so that's everybody, right, online? Tyler? Yep. Okay, so now we'll just go on to the roles and responsibilities of student trustees. So you will be the liaison of this, of your, the students at your school to the Board. So you will give a monthly report when you come to the meetings, the first meeting. So we have two meetings a month, on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. And in the first month, at the first meeting is where you'll do your student presentation, are your student reports. So you'll have to email that as well to Tracy Long. And you guys been in communication with her already? You guys have her email? Okay. So you'll do a monthly report and then you'll just send that to her as well, but then you'll come and present it to us. And so with your busy schedules, you will come, join, you'll have your seat, do your report, and then you're free to go. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting with us. You can just present, do your report, and then go do your activities, homework that you need to do. Let's see, what else? I don't have anything else. Do you have anything else Superintendent Hill on roles and responsibilities? So now I'll just open it up for any questions you may have for me or administrator or any other trustees. Any questions? None? None, that's it?
One thing I would add, if I might, so we actually convened a special board meeting tonight. We were supposed to meet last Tuesday and from time to time, we may not have a quorum. And so in order to vote on measures in front of the Board, they have to have a quorum present. So a majority of the Board has to be present to either approve or reject a measure in front of them. And so we reconvene the meeting for tonight. So we're off from our normal second and fourth Tuesday of the month. And so we'll actually have another Board meeting next Tuesday as well. So usually the two a month, there is an exception, I think, for November and December, where we just have the first Board meeting of each month due to the holiday season, so. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yep, no, but Tracy will email you. She'll send you all the communication you need. Yep?
I was just wondering, so we have two meetings per month and we're only sharing a report once a month. Would you like us to come to the second meeting or is that not required?
It's, it's up to your calendar. If you can, you can come and then you can stay for the different reports we have. But as long as we get that first month report from you, and it can be anything that deals with your school, sports, anything like that, different club events, whatever you want to tell us, it helps us connect to the students in the schools.
Great, thank you so much.
And is there anything specific you'd like us to provide in our monthly reports that you may haven't seen in the past?
What a fantastic question. We get great reports about clubs and social events, but I'm really interested in pressing issues that you think that the school is facing and kind of underlying, yeah, just underlying norms and cultural things that are happening. I'd be really interested to know about that at each one of your schools.
I would agree with that as well. I mean, you're in kind of a weird position, because I don't know what degree you feel you can speak for your entire student body authoritatively as to what your schools feel. So I mean, you gotta couch it a little bit. But I have, over the years, wanted to hear more, what you actually feel about what's going on, especially if there's something on the agenda. But that's just me, but yeah.
Yeah, no, and it really varies from year to year. So last year, while we were in the hiring process for Superintendent Hill, we did have a lot of input from Hellgate High School, student government, or student, one of the clubs. They kept in communication with Board members in, then Superintendent Lodge. So it's just up to how much you guys feel like you wanted to put into your report. So I know some of you just read off of it, what you submit as well. So we just leave it up to your comfortable, how you want to present it.
One thing that I would maybe share about this too is that people come to these meetings and want to tell us things at times and you will be here to hear those things as well. And you should know that we, during that time, we don't speak back to people. We don't get into like a dialogue. We don't answer questions that people might raise and so on. And it's kind of the same when you would share anything in your report. Bringing something up doesn't mean that it's now like something that the Board is gonna discuss or immediately come back with a solution about necessarily. And I think one of the really key roles that you can play is both helping people understand kind of the working, like how, how decisions do get made, because people sometimes can be frustrated by how long and kind of wonky decision-making processes can be. And you'll see that if you stick around, especially after your reports. But I think just knowing that, you know, sharing something doesn't mean that we're able to discuss it like in the moment at all, can just be helpful to kind of normalize that.
And I think the reason there, just so you know, is that under Montana law, we can't make decisions or discuss things that we haven't given the public notice of, right? So we can't just go rogue and start doing something that you want to say. So that's kind of why. It's not that it's not important. But I do just double down and just think of it as more of an opportunity than an obligation. I mean, you have access to the people that run your schools, so say what you want to say.
Any other questions, comments? No? All right, so the time is now 5:47 and we'll adjourn the student trustee orientation and then we'll meet, come back at 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. All right, the time is now 6:00 PM. I'm gonna call our School Board meeting to order. Role call has been taken and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so now we're on item three, which is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as written? Moved by Vice Chair Hobbins. Seconded by Trustee Decker. Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approval in tonight's agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Trustee Mercer? Unanimous to all trustees present. Onto item four, which is the Board of Trustees. We are going to interview applicant for the Board of Trustees vacancy. So District A Representative Lola Woodman-Dismett became vacant on September 12th and we put a call out for applications, which was due on October 4th, and received only one candidate, Anne Wake. And if Anne can please come to the table in the front for a couple of interviews to complete her application. And we will ask two questions. This one. All right, go ahead. Trustee Mercer?
Question number one. What skills and abilities, including any prior Board experience, do you have that would serve you in the district well in your service as a School Board trustee?
I have 13 years of experience as being a Board member. I have 13 years of experience of being on the State Board. And I have experience being on the CPAC Committee, which is a Certification Standards Practices Advisory Committee. And I was on the Board of Education Variance to Standards Committee.
So, hi. What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you're a part of an 11-member Board?
That I sit and listen to all the information provided and I vote as I think best for the, for the, whatever is on the agenda.
All right, now I'll open the floor for discussion. If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion to appoint Anne Wake. Moved by Trustee Decker, seconded by Trustee Witcher. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? I just want to thank you for applying for our vacancy. So all those in favor for appointing Anne Wake to the vacant District A seat, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now I'll turn it over to our District Clerk, Mr. McHugh.
Are you gonna make me stand up?
I'll stand up with Yan. All right, Yan, I'm gonna issue you the oath of office and if you could, please raise your right hand. And repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Yan.
Anne, you have a seat right here. All right, so now we'll move on to item five as she comes up. And it is to approve the minutes. So we have two to approve. We have the special board meeting from September 26, 2023. Is there a motion to approve those special board meeting minutes? Moved by Vice Chair Hobbins. Seconded by Trustee Decker. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? All those trustees in favor of approving the special board meeting minutes on September 26, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now to approve the minutes for the regular Board meeting on September 26, 2023. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by, moved by Trustee Wallach. Seconded by Vice Chair Hobbins. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? All trustees in favor of approving the regular Board meeting minutes of September 26, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. All right, so now we're on to item six, which is public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the Board as a body. It is not a time for Board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and we are keeping track of the time. So you'll see a warning coming up, so please be mindful of the three-minute limit. The Chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order. Any public comments?
We do have public comment tonight. I will be calling people up in the order they filled out comment cards, but there will be opportunity for those who haven't filled out a card to speak at the end. I apologize in advance for mispronouncing people's names. First is Jessica Bracay. It could be Jessica Bra-
Bracy.
Bracy?
Is it bad?
Go ahead. Come on up. Please sign and spell your name. Go ahead and turn your microphone on. And then say and spell your name.
Hello, my name is Jessica Bracy. That's J-E-S-S-I-C-A-B-R-A-C-E-Y. All right, thanks. Nice to meet you guys. I have awful handwriting, apparently. So I am here on behalf of the Parents for Baseball in Montana. And I just wanted to, I also am a member of the local Little League community here for Mount Jumbo Westside. And I just want to let you guys know that I support baseball in the, in the schools and I know that a lot of you do as well. I know that you have a lot to juggle with budgets and things coming in the school and all of that. So I just hope you appreciate the group that we've got here representing. And I know that there's the immediate need that we have and I know that we're all ramped up and ready to go to help in whatever way we can. And I know you're also looking long-term as how do we continue to fund this after it's up and running in the schools. But the one thing I want to tell you is this baseball is a sense of community and I really, it's something that we really embrace. And I think when you decide to move forward with this, you're going to see that there's community members in here that are going to be there for a long time. We have kids that are going into high school now. We have kids that are eight and nine. We have kids that are younger than that in T-ball. And so I, as a member on the Board of the Little League, will do what I can. Obviously, we have a Board as well that has to vote and make decisions. I will do what I can to support, whatever we can to, you know, provide fields, help with things of that nature. So I just wanted to introduce myself and nice to meet you all. Thank you for the opportunity. And we look forward to playing ball.
Next is Kayden Castleton.
My name is Kayden Castleton, C-A-I-D-E-N, C-A-S-E-L-T-O-N. Hello, my name is Kayden Castleton and I'm a freshman at Big Sky High School. I have loved playing baseball with my friends as long as I can remember. It is easily my favorite sport, but one that currently has less options for me as I get older. Unless you play for the one Legion program in town or can find a spot on the travel, travel club, your chances of playing baseball are very limited. Unless they go to a smaller high school, a lot of kids will have to stop playing this year because of the amount of time and money they've had to commit to non-high school programs. It would be so awesome if more people could continue playing with their buddies throughout high school. Plus, I have former teammates that go to Big Sky, Sentinel, and Hellgate, who've all played in Little League State Championships year after year. And I know Missoula could be very competitive. Thank you for your time and hopefully helping more kids get excited about a sport they've all grown up playing together.
Next is Neil Castleton.
All right, so Neil Castleton, N-E-I-L-C-A-S-E-L-T-O-N. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to come out and speak to you guys today. You know, proponents of high school sports programs, we all believe that these activities contribute to the overall, you know, education of athletes. You know, from the National Federation of State High School Association, NFHS, you know, website, in 2008, they, the NFHS emphasized that students who participate in high school sports make higher grades. You know, there's been numerous studies conducted throughout the US about this, you know, comparing student athletes and non-student athletes. You know, too many to kind of cite in the three-minute window here, but you know, it shows that it supports not only higher grades and GPAs, but also higher cumulative test scores and lower dropout rates than those of non-student athletes. You know, across the nation, high school sports have faced scrutiny as reduced federal, state, and local financial support has forced school administrators to find ways to reduce budget decisions just due to the economic current climate. You know, the easy way out is to cut programs. You know, or in the case of baseball in Montana, not to give it the attention it rightly deserves to get it even off the ground. So what we're here to do is, you know, help you guys find a way to support, you know, financially support these programs that have been shown not only to keep more students in school, but to help them succeed academically. And as you can see, there's already a ton of support for a program like this. You know, even on a day's notice, we, you know, are able to show out. And we just ask that you give consideration to our requests and ultimately vote to approve high school baseball for the upcoming spring season. Thank you for your time.
Next is Matthew Doty.
Matthew Doty, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-D-O-T-Y. I'm a freshman here at Sentinel High School and I've played baseball ever since I moved here from Hawaii. It's been my favorite sport for as long as I can remember, through thick and thin. High school baseball's been something I've wanted ever since I even thought about it or heard about it when I was in sixth or seventh grade. I played for the Missoula Mavericks this past season and I honestly think that high school baseball would be a great improvement, because I know there's a lot of people who wanted to play for them that didn't get the chance to. I understand that, you know, there are other opportunities and other ways that people can play baseball, especially when they go through high school. But I know a lot of friends and I've talked to that would love to play high school baseball, but they don't think that they're good enough or have even enough money to go play for the Mavs. There's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of things that I've put into consideration when I thought about the pros and cons of high school baseball. I'm actually writing a report about it in English class right now, so it's kind of fresh in my mind. But I think high school baseball would be a great, great improvement to a lot of schools in Missoula. And I know there are a lot of other schools, not Missoula, that have high school baseball. And I've wondered that for a while, why don't we? But I'm sure everybody in the community would love to see it. And I know me and my family and I'm sure tons of others would love to support it and do whatever they can in order to get it. So thank you guys for your time.
Cindy Evans. Cindy Evans is up next.
Hi there. I'm just here to support high school-
Could you please say and spell your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Cindy, C-I-N-D-Y, Evans, E-V-A-N-S. I just, I'm here to support the high school baseball. I think we've been on travel ball a little bit, did Little League for a while. The community is incredible. Friendships that are made, I think, can be lifetime. I feel since my son's been doing baseball and creating friendships, his, I think he's just more focused at school. He's excited just to be involved in something. He's excited just to be involved in something. And now it's like, like they said before, excuse me, like they said before, we either have to go to Legion Ball, or they kind of stop playing. And when they love the game, it's hard to see your, your kid have to, you know, if they don't make Mavs, then they're kind of done. And I think it would be a great addition to the high schools, for sure. Thank you.
Next is Cassie Grublie.
Come please.
And go ahead and sign in.
Oh, and sign in.
My name is Cassie Grublie, spelt C.A.S.S.I.E., last name Grublie, G.R.U.E.B.E.L.E. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I have a grandson that plays baseball and I'm going to get emotional. Anyway, he's been playing ball since he was very little. He has some physical issues that I, we don't want him to play football. And basketball's really hard on him. Baseball seems to be the only sport that is really safe for him to play. And he'd like to have the opportunity to play in college. So the hope is that he can, can work towards that. And high, high school baseball would give him that opportunity, hopefully, as well as allow him to continue to play. Because as a single grandmother trying to pay for all of this, it's been difficult. And high school would give them, give him that opportunity, hopefully, to continue. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Laney Hensel.
Sorry, I don't have a moment. I'm just here to support. I wasn't sure I should sign in or not.
Thank you. Madden Hensel. Brennan Labbe.
Brennan Labbe, B.R.E.N.N.A.N.L.A.B.B.E. I am currently a senior at Hellgate High School here in Missoula. Baseball's been a part of my life since I was four, from Little League travel ball to Legion Ball and traveling for baseball, et cetera. Baseball's opened up opportunities for me with employment, opportunities with college baseball, travel for showcases. But having to travel outside of the state to get good recognition by colleges and other teams is, is pretty hard. Right now, the only two states that still don't have high, high school baseball as a sanctioned sport are Wyoming and South Dakota. So 47 states, including Montana, with, with A and B, have high school baseball as a sanctioned sport. I think it'd be a great opportunity for future high school athletes to have the opportunity to play baseball for their high school in Montana. Obviously, I'm a senior, so I probably wouldn't get that opportunity graduating this, this spring. But yeah, a lot of people have, have talked about the financial aspects, the ability aspect. I think it'd just open up a lot more doors for high school athletes. Like I said, with, with work opportunities, with college opportunities, kind of staying in school, getting better grades, that kind of stuff. It's opened up doors for me to have an education after high school while being an athlete. And I think that's something that every prep athlete should have the opportunity to, to work towards and strive for. So I think having, having high school baseball as a sanctioned sport for double A schools would be, would be a great opportunity for the MHSA and Montana sports. Thank you.
Lonnie Labbe.
My name's Lonnie Labbe, L.O.N.N.I.E.L.A.B.B.E. Again, thank you guys for opening the doors for us to come and chat about high school baseball. I am Chair of the Board for a travel club for high school age here in Missoula, Missoula Impact Baseball. And between our program and the other option in Missoula right now, which is the Mavs program, we can only afford the opportunity for about 60 high school students to continue to play baseball. That's an insanely small percentage of high school baseball athletes in our city. I think it is vital and crucial that we open the doors to more kids who are interested in playing baseball. Once you reach high school, if you're not in that 60-quantity group, Little League is done and your baseball options are done. Having high school baseball at all three high schools, I think, would be an overwhelming outpouring of support, both by our communities and by the kids interested and wanting to continue the sport of baseball. We've, my son has played baseball since he was old enough to pick one up. And it's amazing how many doors it has opened for him. He mentioned jobs. It's opened friendships that he has cultivated and been able to maintain, literally, since he was four years old. I don't know of too many people that have, you know, 14, 15-year-long friendships. Baseball gives an option for that, too. And it gives kids something constructive to do. You know, I would much rather see 20 kids out on a baseball field, you know, performing and having fun and getting exercise and building relationships as opposed to doing something maybe less constructive. Baseball gives an opportunity for kids to become productive members of our community and our society past baseball. Thank you.
Next is Devon Leader.
My name is Devon Leader. That's D.E.V.A.N.L.E.D.E.R. I want to also come in, in support of high school baseball. I have three boys who have played baseball similarly since they could pick one up. And my son Jude is now a freshman at Sentinel and wants nothing more than to be able to play high school baseball. With that, I want to talk about the educational benefits to young student athletes. First off, this allows another place for accountability through use of academic eligibility requirements that already exist in the high schools. And so by adding high school baseball, this will be beneficial, particularly in the spring semester, where typically we see more disengagement and dropout rates increase. This will help promote graduation rates by providing another reason for seniors to stay in school and stay engaged with their studies. Finally, high school baseball supports an increase in students moving on to higher education. While college affordability is at an all-time low, high school baseball provides an increased opportunity for local boys to earn scholarships in college and seek degrees with less college debt and an opportunity to enter the workforce better educated. Finally, I just want to talk about a personal story, seeing a lesson that, that my son learned through high school, or through baseball this last year. While playing in Little League, they, his team faced a team from Frenchtown. They had a pitcher who was throwing 10 miles an hour faster than everybody else they've ever seen. And all the kids were intimidated and they were scared. And we talked about it, my son and I, and said, you know, if you keep letting those balls go by, you'll miss every opportunity. And so he went out and he swung and he hit it. And to see the excitement that he had to say, you know what, I did it, is a huge life lesson. And that's one that I don't want to have him look at us as the adults in the room and to say that we had an opportunity to do something and we didn't even step up to the plate. So I want to ask you, come please and take a swing at high school baseball with us.
Next is Jude Leader.
My name is Jude Leader, J.U.D.E.L.E.D.E.R. I'm a 15-year-old and I attend Sentinel High School as a freshman. I'm here because I want to show my support and my love for high school baseball and I want to have the opportunity to play for them. Personally, I have played this sport since I was just old enough to pick up a baseball. And I've loved it ever since. I've made many lifelong friends and found something I'm good at and I love. I recently signed, took a petition out throughout Sentinel High School. And with the help of a senior, I gathered 235 names of people saying they would support, 45 of them saying they would have interest to play. That's enough kids to make three teams. When I asked kids about this, if they had anxious to sign, I had some who literally jumped in the middle of the busy school halls. Some of them shouted, they were overjoyed and hyped up and super excited for it. I know that high school baseball is a spring sport. And when you hit the spring as a student, you start to slack off and not want to do anything in school. But if I have to be academically eligible, it's going to give me a drive to work harder in school and to play, to be able to play something that I love. It will also give me an opportunity to go on and get advanced degrees at colleges if I can continue to grow in this sport. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. And I hope you can join me in supporting baseball at the high school level.
Missy McCulka.
Missy McCulka, M.I.S.S.Y., M.I.C.U.L.K.A. Good evening, Board, Trustees, and Administration. Thank you all for your hard work to make Missoula's schools awesome. In order to keep up that trend, we are here again to show and voice continued support as a community for high school baseball. The Missoula Parents for High School Baseball Group is represented here in the audience behind me. You will also, you've also heard from several students who are representing many of their peers who couldn't be here tonight due to other sports and activities. We understand that budget is always an issue every year for every school. That is why our parent group is ready to spring into action to fundraise to cover the entire first year of costs for high school baseball and then continue fundraising to alleviate continuous costs. Our group has been compiling data and has created a detailed launch plan, which we gave to Superintendent Hill. We did this to relieve the pressure from the A.D.s and to provide snapshots of how this is an achievable goal. We, the parents, are willing to work side by side with the district and A.D.s. We know this might seem unconventional to have parents work alongside A.D.s, but we have a finger on the pulse of all things baseball. And we are committed to helping and make this, making this possible without draining too many resources and energy from MCPS's already stretched budgets and busy A.D.s. We respectfully ask for your help to consider leaning on us through this process so that we can help. Our kids have also gotten involved, as you can see tonight. One young man, Jude Leader, took it upon himself to create and distribute a petition for interest in baseball. This petition has spread to all three high schools. And there are already well over 300 signatures and counting. And they show that there are at least two teams' worth of interested players at each school. It's pretty impressive. We know that there are many, many things to consider while budgeting for schools. And we ask that you consider helping us to find the money by approving high school baseball once it's on the, on the docket. Once it's approved, we can apply for grants and fundraise. And hopefully, our fundraising efforts will even help other activities in the long run. Thank you.
Kevin Payne. If I did not call your name yet and you would still like to speak, please approach the microphone. No further public comment.
Alright, thank you all for your public comment. So now we'll move on to item number seven, which are reports and announcements. And tonight's our first night of our student trustees. So we'll go ahead and go through each of our schools for our student trustee report. First up is Big Sky High School.
Hi, my name's Atsita Glidwell and I'm a class president at Big Sky. We have a brief overview of just some things coming up at Big Sky in the next couple of months and weeks. And then some updates on activities and athletics. So we have over 100 students that are scheduled to take the PSATs on October 25th. Students will begin signing up for IB exams in November. The IB exams will be in May of 2024. Big Sky is adding three academies to the school next year, I think. And student ambassadors will begin visiting middle schools and talking about what those academies will look like and just talking about the transition into high school.
Yeah, so I guess along the lines of the overview, we have, strengthening our relationship to Target Range School. We have several students that are going to become bigs to Target Range through a partnership with Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We are also getting volunteers for the ROW Program, which is Readings Opens Your World Partnership with Target Range, where high school students will be able to read to kindergarten, first grade, and second graders.
With fall sports coming to an end, we have some updates on that. The boys soccer team made it to state. And they'll be competing against Hellgate on Tuesday, October, or tonight, I guess, at 7:00 P.M. The match will be held at Fort Missoula. And then we have Cross Country is going to state this week, this weekend, at Rebecca Farms in Kalispell. The boys team will be racing at 11:30 and the girls team will be racing at 12:30. And then our boys and girls golf teams just finished their seasons and had a pretty good showing at state this year.
Yes, and to add on top of that, Big Sky's Link Crew and Student Government are partnering together to host a trick or treat. And that's going to be October 30th from 5:30 to 7:00. And basically what that is-
from 5:30 to 7:00. And basically what that is, is it's a bunch of Big Sky clubs who will have a table with information about their club and we're hoping to reach to some of the younger communities and hopefully people who are coming into Big Sky to kind of show them what it's about and get some candy. And then October is Campus Cleanup Month at Big Sky and this Link Crew, every week during the month of October, is going to our advisory classes and each class is in a competition to see who can clean up the most trash. And that's all we have for Big Sky. Thank you.
All right, next up is Hellgate High School.
Good evening. My name is Devon Desha. I'm a student at Hellgate High School. And to start on behalf of the student body of Hellgate, we would like to thank the board for having us.
I'm Wilson Freer. I'm at Hellgate. So kind of to recap, September and our kickoff of the year, we had one of our really big events of the year, which was our homecoming week. And we had a lot of things go well that week that we kind of put together that we want to continue for the rest of the year and other big events that we have coming up. So our Spirit Week themes were really accessible and we had a lot of participation. So our themes were on Monday, we had Color Day and then Tuesday was Jersey versus Jersey Shore. Wednesday was Decades Day. Thursday was Barbie versus Oppenheimer and then Friday was our classic red and gold day. We think that it went well because we had a lot of advertising around the school. We had lots of posters created by our senators and officers. So that was a good way for us to include the senators in some student gov business. On some different days during lunch, we had like a cornhole competition, chess dance and dodgeball. And then on Wednesday night, we provided pizza, tug of war and a bonfire and we had a really great turnout from our student body. So that night also, we recognized the freshman class election winners who were Jack Pugh and Presley Clark. So they were announced at the bonfire. And we ran that election this year, kind of went the week before and then into that week. And then on Friday, we had a school-wide assembly where we recognized the homecoming royalty for juniors, sophomores and freshmen. And then our senior homecoming royalty was announced at the game. We also recognized the Hellgate inductees to the Hall of Fame, the Athletic Hall of Fame at the assembly and at the football game for their fantastic athletic achievements. Their families were invited and acknowledged as well. Then we had a football game, which was a lot of fun. We had a really great turnout there as well. Some big goals we kind of have for different games and also just like our, our students throughout the year is just keeping our energy up and our positivity up with that. Sometimes it can be an issue with any student section to have some negative things happening. So we want to make sure we can be as positive as possible. And Student Gov also wants to push some initiatives to help keep the student section cleaner because that was also an issue we had was it was kind of a mess after. So we're thinking of ways to just get the students to like leave it looking a little bit nicer than maybe it has been in the past. So those are some things we want to work on in the future.
As far as ongoing events, today we held our school-wide candy sale, raising money for the Montana American Indian Women's Health Coalition, which is, which is an organization that provides free cancer testing for indigenous women as well as having a school-wide pinkout and a pinkout theme tonight at the volleyball game, supporting breast cancer awareness. Next week, we will have our sister school from Japan visiting with exchange students staying with Hellgate host families and representing their Japanese culture and within the school. We are continuing Hellgate Happenings this year, which are short videos filmed every week and are shown in class on Mondays to keep student body informed of upcoming events, sports and other activities around the school, as well as highlighting different programs and accomplishments that may be going on. Lots of clubs are running and starting across the school, including National Honor Society, Model United Nations, Key Club, Art Club, Future Health Professionals of America, Business Professionals of America, Jewish Student Alliance, as well as the return of the Gender and Sexuality Alliance, which has been on a year-long hiatus, which Hellgate would like to comment on, as much of the Hellgate High School community is against the recently passed Senate Bill, which has been under review by the board. And we would just like to iterate our praise for what you guys are doing for that. And we would also like to recognize our newly-elected host at F L C President and Vice President, who are both students at Hellgate High School. Our boys soccer team seeded number three is entering the playoffs tonight against Big Sky at 7:00 o'clock. And our girls soccer team seeded number one is entering the playoffs this Friday. Cross Country is going to state in Kalispell this weekend after their successful senior night in city meet with both girls and boys placing first. Football ends their season this Thursday after putting in great effort all season. Our cheer team is going to Nationals in Denver later this season and volleyball has our senior night on the 26th against Flathead. As far as future events, we are planning on having various winter and late fall fundraisers, including a raffle of prizes from local businesses, which proceeds will then go to families for Thanksgiving and holiday meals. And as fall sports are coming to a close, Student Government is starting preparations for this year's GOAT game, which we are absolutely enthused for and we plan on having February 15th. Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to Seeley Swan High School.
Hi. This week will be the end of our regular season.
Hold on Reagan. Okay, try now.
And we received we're calling this our transitional year. You know, people bring a lot of assets to our teams.
Hey Reagan, can you, can you pause for just a second? Reagan, this is Superintendent Hill. Can you pause for just a moment? We're having some technical difficulties. You're, you're breaking up and we can't understand what you're saying.
Tyler, do you have a copy of her report?
I don't have a copy, I'm sorry.
Reagan, do you want to try again?
Yeah. Actually had a, all the earlier today, so that might be part of the problem. I was getting
Sorry Reagan, we can't understand. You keep breaking up. Can we just do your report the next meeting?
Yeah, of course.
I apologize. We're just not, we're not getting any good feedback from the internet. Thank you Reagan. So now we'll move on to Sentinel High School.
All right. Good evening. Even though we're quite early into the school year, Sentinel has gotten off to quite the quick start. Firstly, I'll cover our fall sports. So we have football, soccer, volleyball and cross country and golf. And they've all had amazing successes so far. So our varsity football team is five and two. They recently just defeated our crosstown rival Hellgate High School. And the coaches are pushing the team to hopefully successfully take on Glacier High School this Friday, securing us a spot in the playoffs. And volleyball has also had amazing successes so far. Our team, our rushy team being 10 and nine and placing us third in the state. And tonight at 7:00, they will take on Capital High School. Soccer has had a great season and as we get into the postseason now, they had, the boys soccer team had an amazing win against Hellgate High School. I believe it was the first time that they had won against them since 2014. So that was amazing to see on Saturday and the Sentinel girls tied Hellgate on Saturday, which was also amazing. And their hard work is clearly paying off as their coaches push them further. And so, yeah, we've just seen amazing successes with our sports so far. Cross Country is going to state like the others have said. And our golf team had amazing individual successes throughout the season. Sentinel's homecoming was also a great success. Sentinel held many activities through the week sponsored by our student government. This included Powder Puff, Dodgeball and a bonfire. And the volleyball team and the football team showed out during this week, both securing us wins to top off our homecoming. And so also our activities have started up. We've seen Key Club has sponsored a Fall Blood Drive, which was very successful. They also volunteered at a Pro-Am tournament at the Peak and supported a staff member's efforts at a kids carnival. And they are currently planning more ways to enrich the community throughout their volunteer service. Student Government has also had quite the busy schedule. As I said, they sponsored homecoming and they were, they held a completely successful toiletry drive, ran class elections, which were finalized on Monday, and worked out many other Sentinel events and we plan to work out many more in the future. Speech and Debate has started up and is preparing for their first tournament on November 4th in Kalispell. And this team has seen the highest attendance, attendance in many years with many new members joining. Similar to the Drama Club, which has also seen a higher number of new members as they kick off their rehearsal for their first play, A Midsummer Night's Dream, directed by drama teacher Katie Cassidy. And the club anticipates the performance to be ready before Thanksgiving. It's great to see clubs like this see higher attendance. Typically Sentinel unfortunately hasn't seen as many academic or art-related clubs with higher attendance. Many of our sports have great attendance, but it's great to see clubs like this seeing more members and seeing more people push their, push out of their comfort zones and try new things. Dance and Cheer have also been performing at many school events such as football and volleyball games and at school assemblies. And many of the dances or stunts are orchestrated and choreographed by the members, which is great to see. And then there are many other clubs at Sentinel, which include Art Club, Chess, Math, Robotics, Computer Science, which have all very, been very successful. And other events, including Model U N, will be starting up here very soon, which we haven't seen a high attendance for, but we're hoping to get more people on. And these students are getting back into the swing of things, but overall academics are going quite well. I believe that this is very related to the new school-wide phone policy that we have seen, where many classes, you just can't have your phone out, you can't have your phone in the hallway during class periods. I believe that this plays a vital role in how students are able to be focused in their classes. And so overall, from the teachers, we've seen that there has been a better academics overall. And it's great to see more students trying new things at Sentinel. And we've been able to offer many opportunities for students to connect through clubs and events. So, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to item B, which are announcements from Superintendent Micah Hill.
Thank you. Just going to cover a few things tonight. One would be something maybe you've seen in the paper recently about the writ of mandate regarding the 95 mils. And the writ of mandate was actually submitted by Calabar Law on behalf of the Montana Quality Education Coalition, of which M C P S is a member. We pay dues to that and I am also on that board. And basically that writ was to ask the Montana Supreme Court to require the counties to levy the 95 mils, as is stated in the law. Obviously, the counties are bucking that trend a little bit. We have some concern that it is actually putting funding in jeopardy into the future. And so maybe call it a difference of opinions. But there is money earmarked for certain things and new money coming into public education. An example would be $40 million is earmarked for the creation of a health trust for public school employees, of which Pat and I are sitting on a coalition of superintendents and business clerks trying to figure out how we might be able to make that work. Other areas, charter schools. There's additional funding that comes with charter schools. There'll be more on that, but that is certainly going to be an increase in, in cost for school districts. And then last would also be early literacy. We expanded our early K programs to include three more classrooms this year. Would look to continue to do that, but when you expand those programs, you're receiving A and B funding, which isn't currently accounted for in state budget. So we're taking the position that we actually should be levying those 95 mils because it could have a negative impact on, on public education. So just a little update on that. Also wanted to just put on the board's radar that we're going to be applying for a transformational learning grant through the Office of Public Instruction, which is a, an application that needs board approval. You'll probably see that come in December. And some of the things that we appreciate about the grant is it ties nicely into our district's strategic plan, our board policies and creates another opportunity to expand services and educational opportunities for students. So something that we're very supportive. The, the process is a little bit complicated in that we apply for the grant and then you get entered into a lottery and you hope that your Lotto ball for $4 billion is polled. It's not actually that much, but, and then you get into a queue for the funding. And so there's, districts are already in the queue. And so we hope to enter into the queue. Right now, that funding is set to run out in 2027. And so if we get in this year, we're hoping to at least see some of that funding and we hope to see and convince our legislators to continue to provide support for that. So I just wanted to put that on the radar when that comes up in December. And then the last thing is, I just want to talk a little real briefly about our transportation contract. We have not settled with Beach Transportation yet and this has been something that's been ongoing for about the last eight months. And I, I'll just say first and foremost, Beach has been a great partner with M C P S. They provide a transportation services for over 80 years. But they're asking for a 12% increase this year, which represents about $876,000 increase for transportation for students to and from school. And we currently levy about 7.3 million permissively from our taxpayers. So this is a pretty significant increase. And we have been asking for an expenditure to itemize our expenditure so that we understand where this $876,000 is going. We recognize that there are increased property and liability taxes and increased payroll and the cost of tires and windshield wipers and all of those things have increased, but we're not convinced that it's to that degree. In the previous three years, we've increased by almost 20%. It was 11.3% increase last year. So we're just asking for a little bit more information before we just wholesale say yes. The reason why I bring it up is because if we can't come to an agreement, we may ask for mediation. But the other component to this is that in, under Montana law, you have to go out for bid for transportation services if you can't come to an agreement. And so this may force M C P S to be in a position where we have to go out for bid. And if another transportation company ha, has any chance of bidding for this, they, this would need to go out either later this month or early next month. So we're just working through that and hope to be successful. We have meetings set up next week. So we'll keep the board updated on that.
Trustee Whitaker.
Is there any other transportation company in town that could take this contract?
Not in town, but there are other transportation companies that are out there. Companies like First Student, Harlow's, Treasure State. So there are others out there, but there's none that are currently located here. And then the last thing I was just going to say is that I'm headed to Billings tomorrow for the Montana Conference on Educational Leadership, which is put on by our state M T S B A organization. So hoping to go learn some new things and bring that back to our board.
Trustee Mercer.
Two questions about transportation. So is the, are we talking for next school year of the contract? Like this school year is already, or no?
This school year.
We are currently not in a contract? We're just?
We're, we're in a five-year contract with an opener for rate.
Okay. And then the seven, or 876,000 is, was that just for the to and from school and then extracurricular is more?
All, all separate from all of that.
But also would it face a similar level of increase? Or, don't know?
Don't know. Yeah.
All right. So now we'll move on to item eight, which is the
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do have a copy of Reagan's report. If you'd like me to read it now?
Oh yes, please do so.
Okay. First, she is going to talk briefly about the sports programs, which include volleyball and football. We received a bunch of new freshmen to both programs. This week will be the end of our regular season and then in about a month, basketball season will start. season will start. Then she was going to discuss some of their clubs, like the Leo's Club, which is the high school part of the Lions Club. It is advised by Mary Stone, and we currently have around 20 members. So far we have participated in highways cleanup and filling sandbags with our local Lions. We also hosted an ice cream social for the firefighters at the Colt Fire Camp, and now we are planning a Halloween humanitarian project to raise some relief money for Maui after the fires this fall. Next is the Student Council, which is advised by Trace Stone and has around 10 members. We recently ran our first community blood drive where students and members of the community came and donated. It, it went really well. We also had a great homecoming pep rally where the members chose and introduced new games. They are currently working on a Halloween costume contest. They also hosted and held a Fall Tournament this summer. Our BPA Club, the Business Professionals of, Professionals of America, is advised by Michelle Holmes and has nine members. We just recently sent four to our Fall Leadership Conference at Fairmont. All nine members have selected their competition and are beginning to prepare for regionals. They also help the Sealy Lake Community Foundation with mailing. Last spring, our podcast team went to Nationals and took 11th in the nation. Michelle Holmes also teaches entrepreneurship, which has about 20 kids this year. Two of those kids are in entrepreneurship and are entrepreneurship two and are currently working on a more advanced business that involves some of our local businesses. One of our new teachers, Warren Bundy, started an outdoor club this year. It has about 25 to 30 kids, and his goal is to give more opportunities and knowledge of all outdoors to all students. He wants to teach students avalanche safety, beacon practice, fly tying and fishing, and go on ski trips and enjoy some hikes. Katie Pellet runs the drama program, which has about 20 kids in it. Last year they held a haunted house, and it was very successful, so they are hosting a second one this year that will be open on the night of October 27th. Students have made all the sets, costumes and props, and there will be actors that have been working on their acting and improv. The proceeds of this will go toward a winter wonderland for the younger kids this winter. We also have our Family Resource Center. Their main focus is to connect students and families with the school and resources in our community. They held a very successful back-to-school barbecue last fall that helped parents fill out a bunch of paperwork. This year has been the best year in terms of students actively seeking resources. They've been doing a great job of advocating for themselves and their education. They are hoping to get families involved in the school by hosting an indoor cornhole tournament, a trivia night, and a cooking class. They also will be helping with the entrepreneurship classes' winter business market. Here are some new things that have been going on recently. This year Sealy Swan received two new teachers, Lori Skyroad and Warren Bundy. Ms. Skyroad is our new science teacher, and Mr. Bundy is our new art and shop teacher. Last spring Trace Stone revived our greenhouse with help from students, and now it is overflowing with tomatoes and peppers that we have been incorporating in our school lunch. Students helped plant and choose the crops and took care of them. Just last week, we had several juniors attend the conference at the University of Montana looking into going to South Korea. This marked the 70th anniversary of the U.S.-Korea Alliance. Lastly, we have our brand-new school sign, which is almost complete. This has been in the works since spring, with students and volunteers helping the Student Council complete it. All that is left is masonry and lighting. A bunch of our local businesses donated material and labor. The metalwork and landscape were done by former Sealy Swan students who have since built their own independent business. And that is all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. So now we'll move on to Item Eight, which is the Consent Agenda. There's no board discussion as it is routine items. First up is, um, acknowledgement of MCPS student attendance agreements. There'll be two motions, an elementary motion and a high school motion. Is there a motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by Trustee Decker. Second by Vice Chair Hobbins. There's no board discussion. Is there public comment on this agenda item? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present, is there a high school motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? Moved by Trustee Wallach. Second by... Trustee Mercer. There is no board discussion. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? All trustees in favor for approving the high school agenda, consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Yay, Ann! And now we'll move on to Item Nine, which is New Business. The first one up is ESER Fund and Recap and Planned fiscal year '24 expenditures, and this is over to Superintendent Hill and Mr. McHugh. And it's information only.
All right. Thanks. So, um, the, uh, the, uh, agenda and the background sort of outlines what, what I was hoping to talk about, and, uh, um, a similar report was presented last year, and, uh, this one includes a little more detail, uh, recapping expenditures and then projecting going forward. Um, the, uh, the plan is to essentially incorporate on the website just, uh, uh, detail the expenditures by year of our, of our ESER funds. And as you recall, the ESER is the Elementary Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Funds. And, uh, if you look on page 21, we've summarized those, those, um, funds because they were allocated in different issues and different series over different years. Um, the one, um, the, the first column on 21 isn't, aren't ESER funds. These are coronavirus relief funds from, uh, that were managed through the governor's office at that time. And otherwise, the, uh, ESER one was the CARES Act, and then two and three, and we're operating on ESER three right now. The ESER expenditures were, uh, were through September of, of this year, so this past September. Um, on page 21, uh, really, uh, not looking to identify or go through each column of expenditures, but, uh, more or less look at the, the overall expenditure or overall allocation, and, and, and that's just it. This is an allocation, so the expenditures happen, and then we have to request the funds through OPI. And so, um, it's a, it's a bit of an administrative process, honestly. And so, um, the expenditures, um, that are incurred are, have to be, uh, submitted through a certain reporting process, and then we wait to be reimbursed for those expenses. Um, the, uh, um, the sheet on 21, if you look to the far right, you'll see the total, um, allocation, um, for the high school on the top end. It's 12.5 million, and then we've expended 10.7, and we're at about 1.8 remaining for their, for this, this coming year. The elementary, um, was 32 million, or I'm sorry, it was 22.7 million, and 19.6 expended with 3.1 available to expend this year. Uh, in total, it was, uh, 34.4 million, which includes the 4 million of CRF funds. So that's, that's sort of the, the, the summary. Um, if we look back and recap the earlier expenditures, the CARES Act expenditures, it was, uh, less salaries and benefits. It was still heavily salaries and benefits, but it was also included quite a bit of supplies. Uh, supplies included, um, technology, hotspots, um, uh, equipment, uh, technology equipment. Uh, it includes software, it included, uh, handwashing stations and a whole variety of HVAC, uh, filters and, 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 uh, and supplies of that nature. It also included a little more in the form of capital improvements. Um, uh, um, we, we redid a number of rooms. We, we purchased or rented a tent, um, and we, uh, installed the fence. And, um, the biggest capital improvement was in our HVAC system with filters and with the, uh, the ionizer attachment to those, to those HVAC systems. But really the focus has been on, on supports for students and, and hiring staff. And, uh, and that hasn't changed really from, from the beginning as I go back and look at the, at the prior expenditures. If you flip to page 22, this is, uh, this is more in the format that you've, you've seen. It's a recap of expenditures through September 15th, and you'll see the, uh, the breakdown among the various categories, um, and with salaries and benefits composing of 95% of those expenditures and, and really the, the, this, the consistency in terms of the types of expenditures have been in pretty specific categories. It's the, the MOA, it's been permanent subs, it's interventionist, both academic and behavior interventionist, um, it's art specialist, it's nursing, additional nursing support, and, and permanent subs. And, uh, and of course the general fund shortfall that we've seen over the years. And those, the general fund shortfall has also been in the form of, uh, s- staff. I mean, that's, it's maintaining to the extent practicable staff, and that's one of the directives of the ESER guidance. So you'll see the, uh, on page 22, just, just on the elementary sides, the, the ESER two, ESER three, uh, recap and, and available, uh, you'll see at the 3.2 million, and the pie chart delineating how those, those funds are expended based upon those categories up above. Um, on page, uh, um, 30 or 23, it's a similar high school recap, um, and these are expenditures again through September, uh, with those categories broken down in, in ESER two and ESER, ESER three. Similar allocation percentage of expenditures, uh, in the high school at 95%.
Can you take a question?
Sure. You bet.
I'm sorry. I'm just asking, would it be possible for you to like, [makes noise] expand the, on the screen? Because we only have it black and white, and so it's really hard to know which...
No, that's pretty...
That would also be super helpful, but thanks.
Pull it closer is what you're thinking, or?
I just want to know which ones are which on the pie chart, because they're all...
Gotcha. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So if you look on this screen, the, the blue, and, uh, right next to it, the sort of rust or orange, the blue is the salaries, the orange is the benefits. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, uh, when this is on the website, it'll be more colorful and look a little more like this. Um, yeah, and then that, that really looks the same on the, on the elementary side. The, uh, the, the slide on page 24 is, is projected expenditures, and again, it really takes these similar expenditure categories, and this is a little different, uh, um, information in that it's breaking the, the expenditures, which are really all salary and benefits, into, um, various categories of salaries and benefits. And so on page 24, the, uh, this is the elementary projected expenditures for, for this year for FY '24. Um, the large green area, the pie chart, is interventionists and social workers. That makes up 46%. As you work clockwise from that, um, that section of the pie chart, the next are fine arts certified staff, that's 14%, and then continuing, uh, clockwise, certified staff for general fund shortfall. Um, that represents another 14%. And in the elementary, we're, we're budgeting or needing to plan to build in far less than we had anticipated, which is good. That's about 355,000, as opposed to over a million that was, uh, part of our original projections. Um, this, the, uh, the graph up above, it, it, it's in descending order, so you can, it, it sort of follows this pie chart. So as I work around counterclockwise, or clockwise, the, this, the purple is administration coordinator, coordinator services at 6%. Miscellaneous staff in blue at, uh, at 6%. And then the light blue, I'm gonna run out of, uh, color explanations, but, that certified staff then at 6%. Uh, the green is, um, 4% for curriculum and online academy, 2%, and nursing certified staff, 2%. So that's, that's the breakdown of the, the pie chart. It's a anticipated expenditure of 2.5 million. We, uh, you know, we're, we'll see where that lands, where that ends up at the end of the year. Um, if we don't need the ESER support for, for our general fund, we won't rely upon it, or, uh, um, if we're able to, uh, realize any position savings, then this is just what we're projecting now as being those costs. Before I jump to the high schools, are there any questions on that graph?
So, but we have 3.2, so what's the plan to use it all then?
Yeah. Our, our original plan for the remaining ESER funds was to, uh, to have 1.4 million to help balance our budget for FY '25. So, so that's still a possibility. It's certainly not that amount of funds. It's more in the 500,000 range. Um, but we could look at a September expenditure, uh, that would, that would assist the general fund for FY '25 on the elementary side. Um, the, uh, through the years, there've been a number of, uh, non-staffing related expenditures that have been identified, um, sort of the, in the HVAC sort of category of expenditures that, that could be, uh, that could be used for any available funds, but, but really this is at 500,000. It's still pretty tight at this point in time.
So I hear that saying you have no concerns about using it all then?
No concerns about using it all.
So then can you, on the, I guess just the big top ones, the interventionist is what? It's one at each elementary school?
Yeah.
And same at the fine arts? I guess those two, I'm curious what those two actually represent.
So the fine arts is, is five certified staff, and then the interventionist, social workers, they represent, um, at a minimum because there's, there's more, but there's nine at each K5, two at each middle school, and then two in each high school. And each of those schools have the opportunity to, to retain an academic interventionist or a behavior interventionist. And, and prior to this year, they had one of each, at least. Some of the schools have additional social workers, um, and in support of their schools. These are, um, I believe mostly title schools. There's some, uh, TOSA, uh, social workers and interventionists. One additional at, um, at Porter, I know, and, um, I believe at Franklin. So those are, uh, th- those are those permission, uh, positions, they're certified staff, but they're in the behavior interventionist category primarily.
Pat, could I speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, you bet.
I think, uh, and there's a little bit more to explain, but I think the, the frog that we're putting on the table tonight is that we have approximately 90, uh, staff members representing about 70 FTE that are currently funded out of ESER that we don't have a funding source for, for next year.
That number seems bigger, because I was counting around like 20 for elementary, and then, so what?
So you have partial FTEs that are allocated to, say, like, a science, uh, at Big Sky, or a partial FTE that's allocated to nurse, or, so when we look at it, you know, just through the lens of human resources, we're looking at people, uh, and there's about 90 people who have some or all of their salary being paid out of ESER. In total FTE, it represents about 70. I think it was 68 point something. Um, and so that's part of the reason why we wanted to share this with the board tonight was because we have to begin planning for the eventuality that this goes away if there's about a half a million dollars remaining, um, if we're lucky, uh, at the end of this year. It, it just doesn't go very far. And so we've been trying to be really, um, thoughtful in our approach about how we're communicating, uh, and then what plans we would have for addressing this, uh, in the future. But, um, it, it'll be a challenge for, uh, MCPS as a whole. These are things that have been around for, you know, three or four years. Uh, there's no question to the value of, of all of those positions, uh, but what you're likely to hear and start hearing is advocacy from each of these groups that are going to be affected, and they're gonna come to the board or come to the administration and say, "Well, wait a minute. X is more important than Y." And don't, you, you need to understand that, right? Like, this is really important, and so we want you to support that, and then, but we don't have the funds currently to be able to do that. Agrees.
I, I don't mean to derail, but I'm, I'm thrilled to have this information presented in such a clear and like, like, really this is cutting to the heart of what it is that we're looking at and what it means. I really appreciate the way that you're presenting this. There have been some other grant funds that the district has secured and is in the process of securing, but would I be right if I said that the positions that are funded through ESER, they seem to me like very much direct contact with student sorts of roles, where some of the other grants that have been discussed and brought to the table have... some of the other grants that have been discussed and brought to the table have more support written into those for coaching kinds of roles, for coordination kinds of roles, and things like that. And they are, those grants are specific as to what those funds may look like, but on the ground, it may feel very confusing to have a conversation about a direct student contact role being at risk when someone sees that a new role has been created somewhere else, right? So some of this is like, the, what we're allowed to spend what on, but it ends up looking really confusing.
Yeah, and sometimes the way that I like to talk about it, just because I'm not as brilliant as Pat is when it comes to budget stuff, but you look at school funding through the lens of checkbooks. I have a yellow checkbook for transportation, I have a red checkbook for general fund, I have the blue checkbook, which is grant-funded positions. And so using these funds for all these variety of things, there are certain rules and guidelines that we have to follow, where you can spend those, whether, you can spend that kind of money and for what purpose. And so that kind of really sums it up in a good way, Grace, that, yeah, we want to be able to have this conversation with the board early and often, so that we're able, as we move forward, to put together timelines and notifications. We have a lot of people that are represented in this discussion, and so we want that to just be upfront and on the radar.
So, I guess my upfront question then is, will the board have a role in making the hard decision as to which positions, in generally speaking, like interventionist, not interventionist, we keep, or do you expect that to be an administration decision that we are advised of?
Tricky question, because right now, all of the other positions that we currently pay for out of general fund or title or whatever are spoken for, and so these are in addition to. So if the board is weighing in at this juncture, it'd be to say, well, we want to keep this interventionist, but we're going to have to cut something else out of the budget that's already in there, if that makes sense. Like, as an example, a behavior interventionist might be comparable to, or even a social worker comparable to a counselor. Well, we want the behavior interventionist, but we're going to have to eliminate that other position in order to be able to afford that. So in my mind, what you're going to see, and kind of what we're presenting right now, is we have all of these positions and parts and pieces of these positions that we have no funding for, and so the recommendation is essentially to say, yeah, we don't have funding for these, but what we want to do is create a long-term plan, where, because we're going to be facing, you know, potentially a operational levy in the spring to say, yes, here's what we can do with those funds. So we have an A, B, and C. If this happens, then this can happen. And so we just want to be able to have time to lay that out. Pat was going to talk a little bit about forming the Budget Committee again. I think we're looking at November 17th as being the first time that we convene that group, and just begin starting this conversation and dialogue, because on the backside of all of this, you have Trevor sitting over there saying, I have to work with employee groups and have these conversations, but also, ESER goes away, he's explaining that we have about a $400,000 budget shortfall on the elementary that's currently being covered by ESER, we have declining enrollments at the elementary, we're a million-dollar budget shortfall on the high school side that's being covered by ESER. So you have declining budgets in your general fund, you have these ESER positions, and then you have to say, you know, if we have decreased funding moving forward because we have fewer enrollments, then we're in a tough spot. And so, some decisions for the board to make, for sure.
And just the other one for me, so on the upside, there's $3 million in interlocal-ish, right? And that we can use for anything, right? And so that's kind of our rainy day, and so the board, in my mind, the board needs to make a call, is this a rainy day? Is this when we draw that down? And, you know, to me, that's a board role. I might be wrong, again, it's all, we're all just one member, but I will just personally say that I will be frustrated if, in June, this is all just kind of happened. And then a parent group comes in and say, where did our interventionists go? The board took it away, and the board didn't. I mean, I'm happy to take heat for decisions I made, but I guess, I guess I would rather be explicitly told, this is none of my business, and it's an administration call, and that's that, and that's what it's going to be, and I can fight about that, than to be slow-walked into just, it happened, and then one day we wake up, and this is what you're doing. And again, I think the diving into the rainy day really does seem like a board call, not an individual position level, I'm not talking that, but, you know, do we want to say, we think that if we can spend this 3 million, we can keep the art teachers for the five years that it will take for numbers to come up on our projections? Making that up entirely, but.
Back to you, Pat.
All right. And really, in addressing what you're bringing up, Cohen, is that the, and reinforcing what Mike is saying, is that this is a very different year, I mean, very different year. Last four years, we've had this bank account of ESER funds to work with, and it's going away. And so I think it'll look a lot different, and we'll be looking at a lot of this information. I anticipate that we'll have monthly budget and levy committee meetings, and then monthly board conversations about the budget, both the general fund and the other funds we have that you guys adopt in August. So page 25 is the high school version with the similar, with expenditures broken down for this year in their major categories. Looking at the screen, the large portion of the pie chart, about half of the pie chart, 49% is certified staff, supported by the general, supported by ESER to reflect the general fund shortfall. This is the 1,001,300 that Mike was talking about. And without using colors, I'll just go clockwise, and, all right, it's got labels right on. So the Missoula Online Academy, that's a 17%, and that's about $400,000, additional certified staff. And this is really what Mike was mentioning, the staff that aren't a full FTE but represent a portion of an FTE in support of various classroom programs, math, science, and whatnot. Administration coordination at 8%. The social workers, 7%, 150,000, and curriculum expenditures, 3%, nursing certified staff, and really what that represents is an increase in time, so moving nurses from seven hours to eight hours. So they had historically been seven, they moved to eight, so that's been picked up with ESER. And then the fine arts in the certified staff, at 2%. So the 2.2 million expended here for FY24 is actually more than what we have available with our projected at 1.8. So we're on the opposite end on this one. Again, like the elementary, looking at the certified staff covered with the general fund shortfall, anticipating or hoping that that won't be to that degree that we're projecting. And then, you know, we're not adding to the ESER mix this year, this is where we sit, and these expenditures represent where we sit. So these are the expenditures to date, the projected expenditures, what we're in the process of completing our enrollment, and so our enrollment, general fund enrollment count, or school enrollment count, needs to be filed tomorrow, so that's been something we've been working heavily on here this past week and a half, and we're going to turn that around really quickly and get some projections out for next week on the general fund side, so we can look at those compared to what this looks like. These are early projections. The other thing with this information, we have some great information that we, that Rob has shared with the board, that Russ has shared with the board, and we're going to go back and pull that up and get that on the website, so it's available in color, so people can look at it. It's really pretty impressive when you look at the intentional effort that was placed in providing supports for students, as somebody had mentioned. I mean, it's really significant, and it's really consistent over time, so we'll get some of that information out there. I think it's really worthwhile to look at. Happy to answer, any other questions?
Any trustee questions or comments? Trustee Decker?
Do you want to make a comment, I guess? I was in a conversation with another superintendent recently, and he was actually saying, like, well, MCPS, they put it all into staff, and we didn't do that. We put it into buildings, and we did this and that. And he was like, you all did that bond, and so you didn't have to put it into your buildings, and blah, blah, blah. And I was like, so, yeah, we did put it into staff. And what I said to him, I just feel like is a message that I kind of am holding on to, and so I'm making a comment here, which is, like, if there's a famine coming down the road, you don't start starving the children today, because there's going to be a famine, like, in the future. And when you encounter, like, really tough situations, like, you give the kids what they need. And it may be that we'll be in a situation of having to make some painful decisions about going forward, and I just feel really strongly that spending money on people to be in the buildings with kids was not a poor decision, because we're facing needing to do something different. Like, kids only get one chance to be five, they only get one chance to be seven, they only get one chance to be 11, and they have to get everything that they need at that exact moment. Like, there's, sometimes things can't sustain forever, and doesn't make it the wrong choice to have done it at the time that we did do it. So that's just something that I feel really strongly about and want to, like, put out there, because in the nonprofit world, it's almost always true that you won't have the money forever, right?
Trustee Mercer?
Yeah, I guess I just want to endorse that, and I, nothing I'm saying, I'm concerned about the future, but I 100% agree with what we did. I mean, it's a little bit extreme, but whatever building you're in, if you have good people with your children, that's what matters. And we did what was needed, and no regrets about that whatsoever for me.
Yep. And I guess my final comment on this would be that I don't want to project that the sky is falling. These are certainly serious and significant cuts, but we also have some things that we're going to talk about moving forward to address some of these concerns, and I'm really excited about those conversations with the board, and how we can move forward in a positive manner, and hopefully take care of some of these things. I think there's some opportunity down the road that we would love to share ideas on where that's going to happen, so, which will segue into the next agenda item.
All right, so now we'll move on to B, teaching and learning in public charter schools. Back to you, information only, but back to you Superintendent Hill.
All right. So in your packet, you have, and it was colorful as well, it will be on the board, but it's mostly like hues of green, so I don't have to do a whole lot of explaining about colors. But I wanted to share tonight a little bit about public charter schools, and trying to distill down the legislative law, House Bill 549, which is about 22 pages long, and so I tried to put this into an easily understandable format for all of us to talk about, and keeping in mind that we, when I say we administratively, this is new for us as well, and so we're learning as we go, getting some really good guidance. But I just wanted to start with the legislative intent. And really, coming out of our state legislature, we saw two charter school bills, and the whole idea being that parents in our state have a desire for education options. And so of those two charter school bills, you had 549, which is the one that you see in front of us, the other one is currently tied up in litigation, because, again, MQEC said, we don't feel like this is an option that meets the constitutional requirements for public education. And so that one's currently tied up, but this is one that MTSBA supported, that school districts in general supported, and so we just want to kind of share a little bit about that. Keeping in mind that this particular brand of charter school is under the supervision of this school board, whereas the other version was, we start a charter school, we get all the funding that goes with that, and we have, we kind of elect from our parent group who's going to be our board and make decisions for us, and we'll just take the money, but there's no accountability under Title 20 of Montana Code, there's, you can exclude people, you can kind of do whatever you want. It was a little bit of a free-for-all. And so that let, continuing with that legislative intent, they are hoping that charter schools are creative, that they're innovative, that they're teaching in new ways, and just, you know, trying to encourage, again, speaking back to transformational learning and advanced opportunities, a different way of looking at that. And so this is what came out of that. And page 27 of your packet shows kind of that, what, how it's defined in the law, that a public charter school is a public school that has autonomy over decisions, including but not limited to matters concerning finance, personnel scheduling, curriculum, and instruction. So if Missoula County Public Schools says, yes, we would like to create a charter school, it is going to be under the control of this school board, it will be a separate budget unit, similar to how Pat talks about the high school budget and the elementary budget, he would then start talking about the charter school budget. And so you get a separate budget unit for each charter school that you create, or you can have an umbrella charter school system within a public school system. So you have to allow parents to choose to enroll, you can't force anybody to be enrolled in a charter school, so it's completely up to the parent. It has to include, or can include, grades K through 12, and I say that because it excludes early K and early literacy, so the law didn't define that. That's something that could be revisited in a later legislative session. And if it's a high school, public charter school, you have to start meeting graduation, you're doing it to set up a graduation requirement, so you are issuing a diploma from that school. If you reach capacity, whatever you define as your capacity, you have to institute a lottery system. So keeping in mind that public charter schools are available to every student in the state. So if we create a public charter school, any student who is a resident of Montana has the opportunity to attend our charter school, provided that we have the capacity to do it. So, and then, the charter school is really a contract, it's a five-year contract with the Board of Public Ed, and so the Board of Public Ed is actually who will ultimately approve whether or not we have a charter school, or anyone has a charter school. Questions so far? All right. So next, speaking of Board of Public Ed, and there might be a lot of questions here at the end, but their responsibility, you know, so ultimately, they're going, we're going to submit an application, and the Board of Public Ed is going to review it. It's 27 questions, it's, they're fairly lengthy, it asks us to describe budget, policy, lottery system, enrollment, what the special needs are of the school, what community support exists for the school, and all of those kind of things. So their hope and their charge will then be to provide that final oversight, the way that OPIs provides oversight over accreditation standards, Board of Public Ed will kind of do that same thing. So they're monitoring, are we meeting graduation, you know, rates, are we doing those kind of things? So there's two ways to apply. One is, Missoula County Public Schools applies to the Board of Public Ed for a charter school, or another entity within your community applies to the school board to be a public charter school, and then this board has a decision to make, yes, we want that to be under the auspices of our board, or no, no thank you, and then that entity can then go to the Board of Public Ed, similar to the way we would, and they get to apply to be a public charter school. So you might be able to think of a local school here in the valley that maybe says, gosh, we'd really like to be a charter school, and they come to you, and you say, nope, they can go to Board of Public Ed, and the Board of Public Ed can say yes, and then they would actually elect their own board from all qualified electors, so it'd be an election for that public school, or for that public charter school, and then they would get the finances that go with that. So, and we'll talk about that here in just a minute. Question about that? Little nugget? Okay.
Big burritos.
Big burritos, yeah, yeah. So the way the law was written, the Board of Public Ed was supposed to put out, is required to put out an application by October 1st of every year. an application by October 1st of every year. That's exactly when it came out. And then we were given one month to complete an application. So basically, we're going to put on paper the idea of this entire school system in less than a month's time. And I am grateful to a group of people here at MCPS, Vinnie, Amy, Barbara, Jenny, Pat. They have, we've been working our tails off on, on putting something together. So, and the reason why we're talking about it tonight is because next week, same time, same place, we'll be sharing some applications with you that we're hoping you'll approve for us to move forward to the Board of Public Ed. So anyway, Board of Public Ed application, they get it, they review it. Board of Public Ed will actually be here in Missoula for their next meeting. And they will actually, a kind of interview or debate proposals. And so anybody who's putting one forward can either join online or kind of in person to talk about their, their application. And then they have 90 days to approve it. And then they'll, once approved, they're good for five years and they can be renewed. But then the Board of Public Ed can also, I have a slide here in a minute that says failure to launch. Like, if, if you aren't actually meeting the goals that you stated, they can shut you down. So. Talk real quickly about enrollment. I talked about this already, but open to any student residing in the state, you can't require a student to attend the charter school in your district. You can limit admission within a given age group or grade level. So you could say, "This charter school is only for freshmen in high school." Or, it can be limited to, "This charter school is only for this gender of student." Or, "This charter school is only for," you can put some qualifiers in there, but in general, you're opening it up. I thought it was interesting that it limits board members and employees of the district to less than 10% of the school's population. So if you have 70 students that are, that can be enrolled in this charter school, only seven of them could be a dependent of a board member or an employee of the district. So, what I read into that is, we don't want you creating these special schools just for your own purpose. So, and then if you reach capacity in a charter school, you have to have a lottery system. You have to give equal opportunity. But you can set it up so that you say, you know, "We're going to have, capacity is 100, but we reserve 10% of those seats specifically for students who reside in our district throughout any time of the, of the school year. Beyond that, we can accept other students." And in doing so, it would be a lottery system. So they would have to apply to be in the, in the charter school, but the, the application is only to get them enrolled in a lottery-type situation. It doesn't preclude the formation of a charter school for the purpose of students with a disability or at risk or discipline problems or things like that. So again, they're just, they keep opening up, like, "Here are some ideas for you to consider, public school, about how you might be able to best support students." And they, Board of Public Ed can't restrict the number of students, so. Next, I get into a little bit of the, just the operation, the charter school evaluation. So these are the things that the Board of Public Ed would be looking at to ensure that you are, again, we're being paid with taxpayer dollars to operate these schools, that we're essentially meeting all of the, the requirements that, that we have in there. And then slide 31, I put failure to launch, which basically says, "We can shut you down or put you on a plan of improvement or do something if it's not meeting the goals or if you're not adhering to the fiscal responsibilities or standards of, of public education." So, you kind of get into, okay, so what's different about a charter school? Like, how is, how could it be different? Well, in this situation, same laws, same rules, same accreditation standards. All of those things still apply unless you're asking for a specific exclusion to that. And those are usually referred to as a variance to a standard. So in lots of small schools across the state, they might have, ask for a variance to the standard of one full-time librarian for 400 students. Well, we don't, we can't find a full-time librarian, so we have to apply for a variance to the standard. And so you can get into some of those kind of things. But you do provide an education for students with disabilities. You do provide, so you can't start excluding for those things. And the last piece on here is that you can't engage in sectarian practices. So these have to remain non-religious schools. So getting into the funding of this, I, I thought it was great that, you know, as they, as they created this idea and kind of ran with it, that they identified the fact that these schools, in order to be able to operate and, and work, are going to need the same type of funding available to a public school that's not a charter school. And so your A and B counts start over essentially. So if you, in public school finance, there's a degradation formula that goes into how much value a student has in the eyes of, of the state. So it might start off at $7,643 per student, per high school student. And by the time you get to the last MCPS high school student, that value is now $6,939. So, there's a degradation value. In this system, each student comes forward, is new in that count. So there isn't, you get a, a new start over for your A and B purposes. The other parts of the funding formula that are at 100%, quality educator payment is at 100%. Data for student achievement, Indian education for all. All of those other funding components are, are part of that. And what's new to the funding in this is the ability to collect a basic entitlement. So every school district in Montana gets a basic entitlement. It's part of the funding formula. So if I live in Augusta, that, the basic entitlement for a high school there is $343,000. If I live in Missoula, the basic entitlement for all four high schools excluding Sealy is $343,000. So it doesn't matter the size of the school district, that's the basic entitlement. And so then you see on the, the slide, the middle school is $114,000 and elementary is $57,000. But they were very specific that you have to exceed the threshold of the basic entitlement. So in order to qualify for that $57,000 at the elementary level, you have to have at least 71 students enrolled in that, in that school. So if you think about it in terms of simple, more simple terms, 10 students per grade level are required in order to earn the, the basic entitlement. And once you exceed that number, then those are new funds that you have available for you. Non-resident students would generate the same amount of funding. So if we had a student who maybe attended MCPS from Clinton, right? We, I just saw we approved six students to go to Clinton from MCPS. But if they were coming our way, they, they received the same amount of funding. So the rules remain the same regardless of where you're at. MCPS cannot charge tuition or fees. So I have this really grand idea for this charter school, and it's going to be a charter school for violin players or fiddle players. And, but we're going to charge you $1,000 for the violin. You can't do that. So there, again, they're trying to, this isn't something that's meant to be a burden on families in order to be able to have access. And so, there's that portion of it, but also, all things remain the same. You can fundraise, you can do, you know, all sorts of things in terms of generating funds if you wanted to for this charter school and for that, for the operation of it. So if you wanted to do advertising or anything like that. The other component that, you know, let's say we do a charter school and the enrollment exceeds our expectations and, but we still have covered all our staffing and there's a surplus. At the end of the year, you could roll that money into the inter-local agreement, which is shared between the, all the districts that are, operate under MCPS umbrella. So there's some, some flexibilities to that as well. If a district has facilities, they're welcome to use them. But if not, you're probably creating a, a funding strain for building a new facility or renting or leasing a facility. But if a, another entity from outside of Missoula came and said, "Oh, we'd love to start a charter school", they get first right of refusal to lease or rent that facility at or below fair market value, is the, the phrase being used. So, knowing that MCPS has some facilities, knowing that we have a larger community, there is the potential for that to happen. My opinion would be that right now, it's not happening because you are essentially, if you come to MCPS first, you're saying, "We want our school to be under the auspices of Missoula County Public Schools and we will adhere to all the laws, regulations, and, and things that govern public schools from a finance perspective, from a educational perspective, from an accreditation perspective, et cetera." So, it's not a, necessarily an easy road for a, an entity outside of Missoula to, to be able to do that. That was trying to summarize, I did it pretty good. Public charter schools, and if you're wondering where I stand on it, I think it's a great opportunity for Missoula and for MCPS to, in some way, showcase what we already do. And there, I mean, there's a lot of things that are happening across the state, and Missoula's not the exception, that could be considered charter school-worthy. And this is a way to recognize that those things are happening. So whether you're talking about AEP or IB or STEM or STEAM or, you know, yeah, you name it. There, there's just so many things. And so, I'm not even going to repeat that. But yes, that could be a, a potential. So all the ideas could come forward. I think the challenge for MCPS right now is, we, we kind of have to pull back the reins just a little bit. Like, we're learning as we go and understanding that if we, if we separate off a group of 200 students from MCPS and our current A and B counts and funding formulas, and they go into a separate account, it, it, it devalues the, like, the, what the whole contributes to the funding formula is greater than the lesser amount, if that makes sense. You could, you just can't do as much with, with, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, but hopefully you get the idea.
Trustee Mercer?
So just to follow up on that, part of what you're saying is, if we're already having struggling enrollment in elementary and we pulled 200 kids out of elementary, we would have to manage that contraction, which could be difficult. Because that would pull A and B out of that. Okay. Two technical questions and then a big one. So then like, we get a percentage of Pat's, like, salary or whatever, we just charge like 0.5% or whatever, some proportional to this, is that right? We, for all the administration in general, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think potentially you could.
Okay. And then, and then students at this, like, unlike Willard where they're still actually a Hellgate student technically, like, this would be, they would be a student of this charter school, graduate from it. Okay. Big question. I think I understand the money benefit, but beyond that, what, are there any other benefits versus just Willard? I mean, is there any, what?
Sure. I, yeah, I think there's lots of benefits. An example would be our Missoula Online Academy, which is currently funded completely out of ESER. And the ability to expand that is pretty limited based on, we don't have any more ESER dollars to contribute towards that. But the other area where you're likely to see potential is to not necessarily have students from MCPS attend an online academy, but students from other districts, increasing your student body count essentially because you have access to that type of education, if you want it. So that would be an example.
Trustee Decker?
In the instance of a, you know, in-person charter school, does it have to be housed under a different roof, physical roof than an existing MCPS school?
No, in fact, you could have a school within a school. I've seen a couple of different articles where that's being proposed, just because you don't have the facility. But, you know, if you took, say Sentinel High School has 1,400 students, you could literally break that into three distinct charter schools under the umbrella of that one building.
So, similar question. It, we talk a lot about, a, a lot of the special kinds of programs that operate within the district that have costs associated with them that are pulled out of the general fund to make those programs happen. And, you know, this, like, what's it called? The basic entitlement could help account for some of those, because that's really what it's for. It's to kind of accommodate for the fact that if you're going to have an elementary school, you need a principal. Like, you got to pay for that somewhere and the per-student funding, you're sort of taking from each student, but then there's also this piece. And so, in thinking about that, does the district, I'm sort of tagging on Cohen's question, Trustee Mercer's question. Because if, say, 200 students in elementary were being served in a specialized charter school program, we actually, it might be a net gain because we, like, that A and B still lives within the district. We may not be adding a physical space and we may be having a basic entitlement that would support the extra costs of that program in a way. Is that sort of some of the thinking?
Yeah, I, I think the, the hard part is just the miniscule amount at the elementary level. 70 students, net $57,000. That's just, Pat, I don't know what percentage of a general fund budget that is, but I'm going to guess like, less than 0.01%. Yeah, like, just tiny. Middle school and high school, not bad, in that regard. So, but it could also account for things. You know, you could have a charter school that has certain activities and one that doesn't. You know, so, again, that kind of speaks to that, you know, what do you want it to be? And in my mind, I think, you know, sky's the limit. There, there could be a lot of great things in MCPS and they could be housed under the roof of an existing school or another component of it.
Trustee Witcher?
Just a quick question, because we were talking about our beach contract. So say we've got 200 students that are going to a charter school that's housed under our current school. Let's say it's at Sentinel. Does the district then have to fund the transportation across the entire city to get those 200 students there? Because I know how much the special education routes cost. And is, are we going to be held to that?
There, there is a potential for that, yeah. Especially if you're going to create a, a program school. So I look at Jefferson and that preschool model where we have to bring kids from all across Missoula into that one program. But if we're already doing that and say we wanted to add a P3-type charter school and bring it into Jefferson where we're already busing and already, you know, paying for the building and the utilities, like, that'd be a great idea.
Trustee Mercer?
So, but to play that harm out, so if we made all three of our main high schools charter schools, we would then be required to bus anyone who wanted to go to whatever one they wanted to go to?
Yeah. So, so that's part of the, the dilemma. So even as we talk about maybe potentially looking at Willard as being a charter school, I think it has the potential to do that. But it, there's some things that we haven't really been able to fully process and, and, and project out. What does that look like? The 150 students at Willard, who can be somewhat of a transient population or can graduate at just about any time during the school year, and another student comes in and, "Oh, by the way, you have to want to go there." And Willard's set up with an application process. It's not like I can just get into Willard right now. But if you open it up and say, "Hey, this is an alternative high school and this is what it looks like. We're only going to do a 20-credit diploma. You don't have to, you know, do X, Y, and Z." You might have a, a group of students that, you know, this isn't, it might be serving that group of students, but not in the way that Willard was created. And so we're actually having those conversations about what, is this what we really want? Let's not dive in and, and make something that isn't what we want.
Another question, just like on house separate. So let's say, not Willard, let's say, online academy and that that was an entity. Do they then, do they participate in basketball, soccer, whatever? Are they their own thing? Do we do, I mean, we have others, not even in Missoula County Schools participating in various programs. I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, it's, again, one of those, that's one of those questions that we're, we're trying to figure out. Right now, we wouldn't offer activities and, you know, those kind of things because it's an online academy. The, the intent and the purpose is to create a, a school where you can earn a diploma, but maybe for a variety of reasons, being in a public high school with 1,500 kids is not where you want to be. And I think right now, we have 50-some in the MOA. Does that sound right, Vinnie? Yeah, I think about 50.
But right now, with all that, if they then also want to do drama, they can, right? Because they're still like a normal part of the school, right? I mean, am I wrong? Are they not?
Yeah, some of those things, they aren't really detailed out in the, in the language of, and so those are the ones where I go back and I would say, I would ask Bea or Lance Melton and say, "So what is the intent here? Is that, you know, is that what's real, what this is really saying? Or are you saying, no, you have to create your own basketball team or your own drama department or your own, whatever it may be?" And so those are the kinds of things that would, you know, continue to add cost to a charter school. a charter school.
Trustee Decker.
Two questions, so many, but two that are maybe sort of related. One is that schools have to follow all federal laws and regulations. And there's a tremendous amount of sort of shifting right now around whether you can or can't use like affirmative action programs or set up programs that, like discrimination in schools is a topic. And the item that you shared about being able to set up schools for special populations including gender, I just wonder, I wonder about that. That's a question that I would have. And then related to that is that where charter schools have been implemented, there's often been, to my understanding, challenges around making sure that enhanced opportunities are available equitably to all because even though there's a lottery, often parents with more like means and social network and resources to know about things ahead of time are the ones who know about things like deadlines and special opportunities and things can seem sort of secret when you are not like a parent who feels like they're in the know. And so I'm curious about like, I guess, I don't, not even sure what my question is, except to say that that, those things concern me about charter schools.
Yeah, I, I think though you're bringing up things that we're constantly trying to evaluate is what does this look like? How do we ensure that we have, number one, equitable access? Are we building it, so to speak, large enough to accommodate what we think we could accommodate? And then do we have a five-year plan for what that projected growth could look like? So even if someone maybe weren't able to get in in the first year in the lottery system, there's, you know, the hope that while you're next on the list or someone could move out or, or things like that. So, you know, and Willard's kind of set up that way right now too. It, it has a definitive number of seats available. Students have to apply to be able to be accepted into it. And then if they're accepted, then they, they can move into that. But we have a waiting list right now. And so I, that may be a challenge that we just have to, to address when we get to that place.
Trustee Walker Andrews had a hand up for a while.
Oh, sorry. I was going to ask the question actually about transportation and that was, and somebody already asked it, so. Any other questions or comments from trustees? All right, is there any public comment on this agenda item? It is information only. Yep, you can make public comment.
Hi, I'm Christine Kolsak. I run the Missoula Online Academy and it is the biggest passion I've ever had in my entire life. So I'm excited. There's some stuff I didn't know. There's a lot of stuff I did know. I did a lot of lobbying last year regarding the terrible bill and the almost not-so-terrible bill. We do have 53 kids. We have nine special ed students. Our students do participate in activities. Currently, one of our students is a manager of a sport. I'm not sports-oriented, I'll be very clear about that. So I don't know what sport, but I know she has to go get on a bus some days and we, we miss her. Right now, we have three and a half staff and it's not enough. I've said consistently that I can build this program and with this, I think I could do it in a financial way that benefits the district. Because I think there are kids who can't be full-time in school. The piece that gives me concern was the question about, can students participate in those activities or those other things that give them passion? Because that's what keeps kids in school. And so we do have kids in FFA. We do have kids who go to drama productions. Our kids are fantastic and amazing. And in the places and spaces in which they can make the choice to engage in public school, they're phenomenal. Our population is very varied. We serve special education students, we serve advanced students. Six of our seniors will be graduating early this year with full 24-credit diplomas. I would not want to see us move to a 20-credit diploma system. I would like to see a tiered diploma system. Years ago, I almost, I talked really hard to Alex Apostol about a tiered diploma system because I think there's a need for it. I think there are kids who just need to be done with school and the value of a diploma is what we sell here at MCPS and we need to get kids through to the next stop. So 20 credits work well for them. But I also think that we could have advanced diplomas where kids are still some version of an honors or an AP program. And those kids fit well within our program as well. So we only have currently five kids who are utilizing credit recovery out of the 50s. So I don't know what the percentage of that is, but five kids out of 55 or 53 who are utilizing that resource. Our kids are not, I don't want to say that they're not credit deficient, but they're not massively credit deficient. These are kids who are middle to above-average students who just need a different pathway. And we're able to provide that for them. But we need more staff, we need more resources, and we need more IT resources than we have right now. So this, this is an exciting piece. So I'm finished. Thank you for letting me move and see the screen too.
All right, thank you. So now we're on to item C, which is personnel negotiation and policy. First up is to approve the personnel report. And this is over to you, Trevor.
Thank you. That's a pretty standard report for this time of the year, so nothing of note.
All right, there'll be two motions, an elementary and a high school. Are there any questions by trustees? CNN, is there a motion by elementary trustee to approve the elementary personnel report? Moved by Vice Chair Hobbins, second by trustee Mercer. All those in favor for, any final trustee comments first? Then, any public comment on the elementary motion? All those elementary trustees in favor for approving the personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a high school motion to approve the high school personnel report? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Vogel. Any final comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of approving the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now we're on to topic two, which is to approve an out-of-country travel request. And this is over to Vinnie.
Thank you. Welcome to Katie DeGrandprey. She's going to be visiting with the board and offering some information for a, a request for her students that are in Spanish to travel to Costa Rica. Take it away, Katie.
Hi, everyone. I was told five minutes, but I'm going to try to make this pretty quick so that you all can go because I know it's been a long evening. So yeah, my name's Katie DeGrandprey. I teach Spanish at Big Sky High School. This is my ninth year as a Spanish teacher. And to give some background information, it's been a long time since Big Sky Spanish in particular has hosted some, an educational tour. And I think this is really part of a concerted effort to offer our Spanish students and really our world language students overall, there's some other things happening as well. Like a more concerted effort to create opportunities for our students to use their world languages outside of the classroom. And also, of course, it's growing out of some student interest. So why Costa Rica and why Explorica? I think you all got the documents. I saw that they're in the back of the agenda. So Costa Rica is extremely, extremely beautiful, extremely rich in natural beauty. I think our students, this is a good opportunity for Big Sky students to form some really good cultural connections as Montana students. Kind of through that value of nature, we're going to do a lot of nature-focused activities and adventures on this trip. I have a pretty adventurous group of students that's really looking forward to going. And why Explorica? Explorica has about 55 years of experience as a, as an educational tour company. It's fully guided, our, we have a tour director with us 24/7. We have a 24/7 on-call support team and just a really solid network of support while we're there. The trip itself, I think you can all see the agenda. We're going to arrive in San Jose, oh, the dates are the 16th through the 24th, which is over spring break. So students wouldn't necessarily be missing any school unless their parents decided to keep them on that Monday, the 25th after, because they'll be back on a Sunday evening. So we'll arrive in San Jose, we'll meet our tour guide. After that, we're going to go to Ardenal, we're going to go to a national park. The next day, we're going to be doing some more touring of that national park, some kayaking, all kinds of fun things. After that, we're going to travel to Monte Verde. That's another, we're going to visit a biological reserve, we're going to do some conservation tree planting. After that, we are going to go to Punta Arenas on the coast. That day is kind of a pause in our trip. We'll have some free time. I think your sheet says there's a crocodile tour. We're not going on a crocodile tour. We're going to take that day to pause and rest and enjoy our time on the beach because they're going to be tired. After that, we'll do a day trip to Manuela Antonio, which is another national park guided visit. Then we'll go back to Punta Arenas and stay there that night. And then we're going to go back to San Jose and we're going to stop in a, in a village on the way there and then we'll fly home the next day. So it's going to be a bit of a whirlwind, very nature-focused, very adventure-focused, a lot of activities. Our tour guide will speak English and Spanish and so the students will have plenty of opportunity to speak with our tour guide and speak with people in Spanish. There are no Spanish classes in this trip. That's one thing we're working towards in the future. Safety, currently right now, there's no health advisories for visiting Costa Rica. There's a travel advisory for increased caution. That's all very common sense things and it's primarily due to theft in, like pickpocketing in touristy areas. I'll coach students through that throughout the trip. We'll go, we'll talk a lot about that before we go and things that they can do to mitigate those types of things. In terms of learning, again, we're looking at building cultural connections, we're looking at using their Spanish in a really real way and participating in multilingual communities around the world. When they come back, I'll be asking them to complete a post-trip reflection and give a presentation to international club students. And also I'll probably create some opportunities for them to give presentations to fellow Spanish students. And that is sort of an overview. I'd be happy to take questions regarding the trip.
Any trustee questions? CNN, all right, thank you so much for your presentation. This is a high school board motion. Is there a trustee moving? It's after eight, my mind's like, is there trustee, trustee Wallach? Trustee Wallach, sir, second. Second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you so much for your presentation. Now we'll move on to topic three, which is to approve enrollments for early kindergarten program. And this is back to you, Vinnie.
Thank you. Trevor stole my thunder. He was well-spoken. This is not unique to the last couple board meetings.
Any questions by trustee? This is a elementary board motion. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair Hobbins, second by trustee Decker. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All those elementary, elementary trustees? If you say yes, raise your hand. The time is now 8:10 and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Oh, my goodness.